Maybe there's a big, long line.
Yeah, it's freezing over there. Bill's hot and you're freezing.
She's by the window.
I bet that fight last night.
There you are.
Lopez had a faraway look in his eye there for a little while now. He was bailing out.
Okay, we are on the air. Good evening and welcome to the City Council's Special Session of December 18th, 2018. Item number one is the Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. I need a motion to place item number two on the Consent Docket.
Motion second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed, same sign. Since the vote was not unanimous, item number two will be voted on separately. Item number two is an agreement by and between the city attorney Jeffrey Harley Bryant and the city of Norman addressing the separation of his employment relationship with the city. I'll entertain a motion to approve and ratify or reject the agreement.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Clark?
This issue's been difficult, but I hope that we can get to the point where we can resolve our differences with staff and community partners without resolving ourselves to litigation or agreements like this that cost the taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars. Just wanted to get that out there.
Any comments? Councilmember Castleberry?
Just a couple of comments. I just want to thank Councilman Pickman and Councilman Clark for reviewing the legal structure they provided, this contract. While the legal structure of the agreement protects the city, it is fiscally irresponsible. I do not think any of us would make this deal in our own business or out of our own checkbooks. This would cost the city over $270,000 part ways with no investigation performed. I will not support the expenditure of taxpayer funds, and I'm going to call to question.
Second. Item number two, the motion on the floor is an agreement by and between the city attorney Jeffrey Harley Bryant and the city of Norman addressing the separation of his employment relationship with the city. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman?
Yes.
Councilmember Carter?
Yes.
Councilmember Castleberry?
No.
Councilmember Hickman?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott is absent. Mayor Miller?
No.
The motion passes by a vote of seven to two, voting against. Councilmember Castleberry, Mayor Miller.
Item numbers three is consideration of adjourning into executive session as authorized by Oklahoma statutes Title 25, 307B3 in order to discuss the acquisition of real property for recreational purposes currently owned by the Oklahoma Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services located in the vicinity of East Robinson and 12th Avenue Northeast and East Robinson Street and 24th Avenue Northeast and property currently owned by the University of Oklahoma along Lexington Avenue between Flood Avenue and Haley Avenue as authorized by Oklahoma statutes Title 25 to discuss possible litigation associated with the University North Park Tax Increment Finance District. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn out of the City Council's Special Session and convene into executive session. Second. The motion on the floor is to adjourn out of City Council's Special Session and convene into executive session. By a show of hands, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed, same sign. That was unanimous.
Mayor, I need to make one correction for the record. I said the vote earlier was seven to two. It was six to two. Same voting distance.
We're back on the air. Discussion regarding the acquisition of real property for recreational purposes located in the vicinity of East Robinson Street and 12th Avenue Northeast, East Robinson Street and 24th Avenue Northeast, and along Lexington Avenue between Flood Avenue and Haley Avenue and possible litigation associated with University North Park Tax Increment Finance District were discussed in executive session. No action was taken and no votes were cast. Item number four is a discussion regarding possible sites for a standalone senior citizen center, and I'll recognize Judd Foster at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. You don't have a whole lot to add. At our last study session meeting on November 20th, we presented five different options and you all had a packet of information and a matrix, a summary matrix of those. Of course, in your recent executive session, you just talked about the North Base site options, and so you've got whatever information is most current there about that site, and that was the, seemed to be the preferred site. At least, sounded like the consensus of the council at the November 20th meeting was that that was the preferred site. Since then, we have met with the two ad hoc groups for two of the other sites, both the Reeves Ad Hoc Group and the Ruby Grant. Ruby Grant met on November 29th and discussed the option of locating the senior center and possibly even the aquatic facility and the multi-sport facility all at Ruby Grant. After a pretty lengthy discussion, they voted in favor, four to zero, in favor of or not opposed to using that as a site location, was their motion. They had a couple of stipulations associated with those or with that motion, and that was to consider the natural terrain and design of the site and if we were to locate those facilities there, any or all of those facilities there, and also to consider any traffic that might be created in that southwest corner just north of the All Saints School site. Of course, we would do that. But, and then on December 6th, the Reeves Park Ad Hoc Group met. They also had a similar discussion and voted similarly. They did vote three to one, or sorry, two to one. It was a couple people absent, in favor of using the Reeves Park site as a location for the senior center. Of course, there's not room for all three of those facilities there, but the concern and the one descending vote was relative to the Medieval Fair and the possibility that the footprint of the new building and parking facilities at the southwest portion of Reeves Park would take up too much of the open or current green space that's currently used by the Medieval Fair. So there was concern about that. It was also recognition of that and part of the motion that was finally approved was to try to accommodate that, if that site were chosen for the senior center location, to try to accommodate the fair by minimizing the footprint as much as possible, keeping everything as far south as possible, and also including some electric requirements that are used by the fair that are currently in place, that were put in place by the fair, replacing those when the time was appropriate. So, in both cases, Reeves and/or Ruby Grant, there was affirmative responses. Then, really, that's all that's occurred since the 20th, other than what you all have just recently discussed. There's been nothing, no new information relative to the Andrews Park site or the site west of the library. We haven't done anything else with those. My, our team here might add something I've left out. Feel free to, if I did. Otherwise, we'd be happy to take any questions and respond to any direction that you all may have.
Councilmember Hickman?
Have we had, I can't remember how long ago it was, one of the meetings we had when we talked about making some amendments to the transportation bond to secure funding to acquire a site, we had talked about that property to the west of the library. Have we reached back out to those folks in the last month or two to have any conversations with them about a potential purchase price?
Not that I'm aware of. No, we didn't do any additional follow-up. We didn't really understand that was a direction.
I thought that we all were pretty much in agreement that if we had a chance, that the best location would be to have it on the North Base. Was that not, isn't that what we all kind of had said?
It was preferred site, but I think his question was, have we?
What are their options?
Yeah, just talked to them about that. I know. Do we have an appraisal on that?
Yeah, we had an appraisal several, a couple years ago or so. I didn't read.
But that has not been updated, but that's still.
But we haven't done anything to update that, because again, we didn't understand that you want us to.
I do remember that when we talked about the land right by the downtown library, one of the issues was buying up all that property, and when the Ad Hoc Committee voted on it, they voted not to continue that option. Now, I mean, we can certainly look at it, but I do remember that as being an issue, and my other concern would be, is there enough room there as we're looking at another model for a senior? If we're looking at more like a wellness center, would there be enough room there even to talk about that?
Right, it would be the most constricting of all the site options in terms of expansion, for sure. Be the least option, least opportunity to expand that if you ever wanted to.
Okay. Councilmember Hickman?
I just want to say that I have spoken with some of the representatives of the Medieval Fair, and I'm very concerned about utilizing Reeves Park for the senior center. It's my understanding that it would likely result in the extinction of the Medieval Fair as we know it in Norman if we get the senior center in Reeves Park, and that's concerning to me, and so I don't know if we've worked with those folks to try to explore options to where that would not happen, but my understanding is it would be 30 or so percent of their vending locations, booths, that would be a significant cut to their funding, and they barely survive now on about a 3% margin, and losing 30% or so of their revenue would be difficult for them to be sustainable. Don't know how much that was discussed in the actual meeting or not, but I do want to, you know, indicate that here on the record, if you will, and, you know, I don't, I'm concerned about that.
Councilmember Holman?
So, I did attend the Reeves Park Oversight Committee, if you will, and I think it was pretty much agreed upon that if the senior center were to be built at Reeves Park, it would definitely have to be a two-story building to fit on there without interfering with the Medieval Fair. And then we talked, or they talked about, that's where the electrical thing came up, that is there something we could do to help cover a cost that is a significant expense to the fair that they're currently paying for? If we went in and we redid the electrical, and they're currently having to pay every year, I guess, to put in electrical, so if we went in and put in a permanent system, that would save the Medieval Fair a significant amount of money. Would that make up the difference if they lost X amount of space? But I agree, the concern from Medieval Fair was definitely legitimate about losing any space. They're really adamant that they couldn't afford to lose any space that they currently have for the fair. So, I think everybody agreed that the senior center could be done at Reeves Park, but it would have to be designed. We'd have to really look at the design to make sure that it's done in a way that doesn't take up more of the footprint than what they're already using.
Councilmember Castleberry?
Well, I guess I need to reiterate what I said when we were talking about Norman Forward and the Reeves Park project. I think at the time I stated that I would not support anything at Reeves Park if it affected the Medieval Fair. And I know the original design that we did did not affect Reeves Park, that's why I was fine with that, but if we're going to put this in there and it's going to affect the Medieval Fair, I'm not going to support it. That was a promise we made as part of Norman Forward. Or I made anyway.
No, I call the same.
Councilmember Wilson?
I too have concerns about the Reeves Park location. I do like it because it's on the, it's east and it's closer to my ward and that sort of thing, but I would really hate to mess with that long tradition of a wonderful, you know, event that we have, and I know it brings a lot of dollars into our community, and it's just a neat tradition, so I really would want to be really careful if that's where we ended up.
Councilmember Holman?
I think we've all talked about the benefits of Reeves Park, that, you know, we already own that land, it's flat, there's no FEMA floodplain issues like we have at Andrews Park. We don't have to wait for any kind of land negotiation deal or contracts to be signed or anything like that, but I agree, it's not the ideal location that I would want it to be as the first one. I think Reeves Park could be a really good option for, for planning to have multiple senior wellness centers in the future. Having one on the north, having one on the south, having east and west ones would make sense, so I think Reeves Park is definitely a real good candidate for a future space like that, but it's not where I would ideally want to do it, just that it's, when all the options we've looked at, there's always been some sort of issue with land or with FEMA or space and things like that, and so, you know, having all those options on the table, I think is important. But I agree with all the concerns about the Medieval Fair really and the impact on that. I mean, that's several hundred thousand people that it brings to Norman every year, untold amounts of money in sales tax revenue that one event brings, so, yeah.
Councilmember Clark and Castleberry?
I agree with all these concerns. I think it's the best for a satellite option in the future. In terms of the Ruby Grant not to jump in case you still have more comments about Reeves Park, I will throw out, I know it's a long ways away for all of them, but it doesn't have the, we own the land, doesn't have FEMA issues. I know there are concerns that it's from east Norman, that's a hike.
Yeah, we're an hour away from some of my.
Yeah, so I understand that concern as well. So that's my east Norman weighing in on that, but it's a viable option that we need to take seriously as well, given that, and so I'm interested to hear your thoughts on that trek with your residents.
Yeah, I don't support the Ruby Grant for a couple reasons. Now, I don't think it's centrally located enough. I don't think that, I don't really think I fully understand the plans for that park, but I would hate to cut into green space anyways, and also that makes me not love the Andrews Park options either. So, I have thrown out a couple times, I know it's crazy, but the perfect swing area for, but I know it's not our land and it would be a big, long delay, but just keep putting that out there, sitting there doing nothing, if we can't get the North Base location.
Councilmember Castleberry?
I was just going to say, another consideration on the Reeves Park is, in our transportation bond issue, we're talking about, you know, fighting Jenkins and also constitutions, so building that, more traffic, destruction, so, you know, that's not the most driver-friendly location there is. And on Ruby Grant, Judd, is the Ruby Grant design, is that an award-winning design or am I thinking of Legacy Park?
You're thinking of Legacy?
Okay, I was going to go, I know we had a, I really liked the Ruby Grant design as is, because that was something that we had a community involved in, we had some architectural students, and so we've kind of really gone with that, and I realize it's a big piece of land and we could do it, but the original design was something the community kind of backed, and I really hate to change that if we don't have to, but, and I am sympathetic to the fact that it is, you know, if we do something at Ruby Grant, then I think it would have to be with the understanding that that is not the only senior center we're going to do. If it was part of a plan for satellites or, you know, a senior center system, which I think we should do anyway, I think if we're going to, we actually do that, then we need to have a commitment that we're going to have some satellite, you know, wellness centers as, you know, and not just have a senior center. We've got to have discussions.
Councilmember Holman?
I would mention, just because we're talking about locations and stuff and options and opportunities, there has been some mention, and we've talked about it way, way back, but the north tip of the library, the current, the new library property, the north tip of it, it's just a lot of big parking lots and stuff, not Annie's Rough House, but to the, to the east of Annie's Rough House. Yes, there had been discussion about that before, about that northern tip being, but that would mean that the senior center would have to share parking with the current library or the new library. But there were early discussions in the new library that there would be potential for a two-level parking deck thing that wouldn't require so much surface parking lot at the new library, so those are options too, that I think if the North Base deal cannot be worked out, then, in the spirit of trying to keep this thing in the central area the best we can, that's something we should probably look at. I would not feel good at all about going with the L4 site at all, buying those apartments and buying all those houses and forcing people to move, but I think there might be some other opportunities there in that north spot. We might be able to fit something in. If we can't do the North Base, feel uncomfortable about Reeves Park, maybe where there's another opportunity to do it centrally and close to the new library there.
Leonard's telling you that the Annie's Rough House lady agreed to $20 million, and she would sell her property.
She doesn't own it.
Right.
I think Jim Adair.
I think that's why she agreed.
I think there's some damages that could be done, though.
They would get to buy our business.
Oh, I'm cool with that. A dollar amount per dog.
I'm having discussed all of these for the last three years and know the pros and the cons. I mean, for me, it's pretty much down to the North Base, one, Reeves, two, and Ruby Grant, three, just because Ruby Grant's so far to the west, but I, those are the ones that I think we have to continue looking at. I am concerned about the whole Medieval Fair thing, but until we know for sure about the North Base, I think we have to keep things.
I would just mention too, that there's a, in the transportation bond, there's a project down there that we have to do a negotiation with OU about it, but there's a chance that Reeves Park is going to have space added to it.
Extra space.
Because of consolidating those two intersections together into one intersection. OU would own that land currently, from what I understand, but it would be part of the park, they'd have no use, and it wouldn't be that much space really, but it could be enough space that a senior center being put there would not interfere with Medieval Fair, so.
Have we seen the engineering, I mean, we've just talked about it, they're not.
Yeah, I think it's.
Just haven't seen much. I mean, we've got concepts, but nothing in detail.
Okay. Councilmember Hickman?
Well, I understand Stevens' concerns, and I have the same concerns about the city potentially acquiring or acquiring housing in central Norman. At some point in time, you know, that's why we get paid the bit bucks, because we've got to make a trade-off decision between, do we want to end the Medieval Fair, or do we want to maybe purchase some housing to get a senior center done if it is the top priority, if we can't get North Base, for example. So I would like for staff, and I thought we talked about this, but I understand there was some misunderstanding, to pursue having the information necessary to be informed to potentially make a decision. So we have options available. I'm not saying that's the one that I want to pull the trigger on, but I think it's prudent to have the information available, you know, so that if it comes down to Reeves Park and Ruby Grant, we at least have a third option that's not on this list right now, which well, I guess it is, but we don't have enough information to really know how viable it is, the property to the west of the Central Library. Don't know what that costs, I mean, you know.
I agree.
People that live there will get compensated and will get, you know, relocation dollars that's required by law. I'm not saying it's, you know, ideal and not anything, but.
Renters would get?
They get relocation under the, they should be eligible for relocation dollars, yes.
Subsidize.
I would definitely like to know what the cost of.
So, I mean, just to be clear, I mean, that, I don't, you know, that's my request. I don't know if, you know, if that means staff's going to do it or if other people need to say they want that as well, but I'd like for us to have the information so that whenever we have this conversation next and can try to get this done, we can have that information.
Well, I'm sure you're, that the staff would accommodate getting some, I mean, I don't think we're talking about going into any big in-depth thing, but they could probably get.
I'd like for us to make some phone calls, you know, to the owner to get an idea of, you know, is this even a possibility and, you know, do you get an appraisal done? But if our appraisal says $500,000 and they're thinking $5 million, then we're wasting our time. I mean, I don't know.
Unless we register more.
Okay.
Okay. Stephen, writing it down. So Stephen, you're interested in that spot too?
Well, I would definitely support having the information about what would it cost? Would the people that rent there, would they for sure be compensated if we were to buy that? Would they be helped? That type of stuff. I would love, I definitely want all the information about all of these sites.
I guess.
Before we eliminate anything, I want to know.
I think I need to speak up about this, because this is what bothers me about this whole thing. Yes, that is another option. It is very upsetting for people to hear that somebody's talking about buying out their property if we're not to the point where we're actually going to do that. It's very upsetting for people that are renting, people that are owning, and all sorts of rumors start, and it really, it really, it's upsetting for people. They start thinking that they might not have a place to live. I just don't think we're that.
It's already on the list, Lynn. West of New Central Library, we've already been talking about it, it's on the list already.
I'm just telling you, I think that we shouldn't pursue it at this time.
Well, it's on the list still. I think in our previous discussions, it is on the list as a possibility, but.
For me, it's if there's no, if there is no other option, because Reeves Park, we can design it in a way that it won't impact Medieval Fair, I think, in my opinion, but with this, there's no way to do this without impacting all these people, so this is the last option that I would consider, but I mean, I do want to know, I think it's valuable for us to know the information about it.
Due diligence.
I agree, Mayor.
Any other comments about it? All right, any other comments about the land? We pretty much know what we're doing on everything else. We're negotiating with the university, we know where we are on that, and we know that we have these other sites, so.
Options.
Lots of options.
And I suppose that, what? Anything else? Okay, at this time, we will continue the discussion regarding a transportation and stormwater capital bond program and a stormwater utility. Mr. O'Leary?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I think Annalise is going to join me eventually here to give you an update on a recent survey, but I'm getting kind of like Judd indicated, council met here on December 4th, and we got what we thought was pretty clear directions on the transportation bond package, the number of projects, the size and so on, and in your packet, the sample bond ordinance indicates a bond issue of about $72.37 million as the city's share of $141 million program, so happy to take further questions on that. So happy to take further questions on that. We have thought, we've gotten some pretty clear direction on the stormwater bond program, also, you know, $59 million program, 33 different projects, been discussed numerous times by Council and others. We have worked with you on your ward meetings. I think I've attended five or six, I think you all had a ward meeting the last 30 days or so, and lots of discussion about all of these, as much as we could contribute to that. Dr. Beverson is here with me tonight for the stormwater, and then both of your committee chairs are here, Mr. Shear and Ms. Naren, who, God bless them, have attended all of the ward meetings and all of the open houses and probably more public meetings than they ever want to go to again in their lives. But anyway, tried to do our best to, to present that information. You have in your packet with regard to the stormwater utility, you have the, the handouts that we've been giving at all of the ward meetings, which is a quick summary of the three recommended options in the committee for the stormwater utility. Basic option of 625, flat fee and a tiered fee for non-residential. Option A, or alternate A, $5 flat fee with the same four-way tier structure for non-residential. Then option B is the three-tiered system, $3.69 based upon living area on the main floor. So happy to take any questions on those for you. And, and as I mentioned, we, Annalise and her team have put together a quick survey and she can give you the results of the last week on that.
Okay. And is she going to do that now you want to ask the question first?
Just a quick question for the survey. For legal, I noticed on the transportation bond, we list out the projects with estimated budget, but on stormwater, we just say $60 million for whatever projects we want to do. Is that, how come they're not listed out individually, or does that give us?
Sure, they will be.
Or will they be, or?
These were, the original drafts of these were actually done by our bond council, and as you'll recall, Mr. Ellis came and spoke to you all about the different constitutional provisions for calling for these elections. So I believe that the projects are required to be listed under the provision in which we're asking for transportation bond project authorization, not required to be listed for stormwater.
Because of the public, purpose of the public right of way and purpose of the public's not? Okay. Also.
I, I mean, I remember that now you're saying it, I've forgotten it. Councilmember Hickman?
I guess I understand that it maybe technically isn't required, but that doesn't mean that we can't not to do it, or that we, that we could do it, right?
Sorry.
We, we could identify the projects.
And not required, but you could.
I mean, I just think that in, in our committee and in transparency to the public, we're going to ask for $60 million on a new Avalorm tax. It's something we should seriously consider listing out those projects. We have, we have them, and so I think that we're potentially, we'll shoot ourselves in the foot if we don't.
Yeah, and I think it's real helpful after the vote to know, I mean, I, I, yes, I agree.
I don't think we should consider, I think we should do it. We know that they are. I mean, if, if you don't want to put the dollar amounts out there, that's fine, because the budgets are, I mean, it's going to be whatever it is, but I think we need to list so the voters know they're going to get these projects taken care of.
And we're good with that, we're good with the dollars.
I like those.
Sure. I think we should list them.
I would just mention that all, at all the ward meetings and open houses that I attended, that was a, a general theme and a request from citizens, and we, we agree, that's a good, that's a good practice.
Well, and if you're a voter and you haven't been talking about this every week, you, you really want to know what things am I spending my money on and where, where is it most likely to impact me, where I drive or where I live? Councilmember Holman?
So, since we decided to put the, combine the Lindsay Street project, transportation project and stormwater into, take it out of the stormwater bond and put it into the transportation bond with that project, we're still doing $59 million, so we just added different projects, I assume.
That's correct.
Or we've got, we've not, we've got no shortage of projects that we need to do.
Yes, sir, that's, that's exactly right. We, that was part of the consideration of the committee at the last meeting, we were making that shift, and yes, we added projects to make up the difference.
Okay. And that's the only one, that's the only combined project we're doing.
Correct, that's correct.
Councilmember Haskberry?
Is there a reason why there's a line there, or is that just a copier? I'm assuming that's just a problem, a copier, or is it, is it mean something?
I don't see it on the electronic version, so we'll follow up on it, right? It is on your.
My copy does have something to do, I got one going, so I just wanted to make sure that wasn't, okay. Just personal preference.
We don't like it.
Can you round these off a little bit? I mean, the voters, $3,436,933, you know, $935 or $2 over budget, people are going to kill us. I know we're trying to get to the 72. I just.
No, happy to. That's what you get when you have engineers.
I know, it's engineers, but I just, from a transparency standpoint, I want people to understand these are estimated numbers, construction costs, and this is not necessarily what the budget's going to be, but it's our best guess, and I know you got 10% of 10% in there, you've already rounded it off a little bit too, so just.
Consider it done, I'm happy to do it, you're right, it's helpful.
Round up or round down?
Round off. Just, some may, some go up and some may go down.
Right.
As long as Anthony's happy. Anthony wants to round down.
He wants to go down.
It won't add up to the right amount of money.
As long as it's not more than the original part that, for a mill, stuff like that.
They cut?
Okay, Councilmember Wilson?
Am I missing it, or did we? The 36 from Highway 9 to Cedar Lane?
On the bottom.
To State Highway 9. Oh, and then the intersection on Cedar Lane, are those are both in?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Six, seven, eight. Oh, there it is, I got you. All right.
These are all the same things, the last things that we talked about, what we've been handing out at the.
Yes, this should reflect exactly what you saw on December 4th.
So while we're on it, any other comments about the ballot language? We can't finish it, I guess, until we know about the utility.
One last technical question.
Yes.
In the ballot language, it says, "The aforementioned bonds shall be expended and the dollar amount of each project shall be as follows." This, when you say shall be, that means I spent $3,436,933 on order and acres as opposed to could be, should be, shall be.
What are you asking, if there's, if there's excess, could we use it on a similar project?
Or if it's shortage?
Or if that shortage is being added somewhere else, or you could plug it between project. Those are estimates.
But the language of shall be does not.
I understand, and that goes with the council sometimes, the way they write them, that's how they want.
Okay, that's what, that meets our bonded venture agreements and stuff.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Are we ready for Annalise and the survey?
Okay. You all have a, should have the summary of the results, as well as a hard copy of the results, that include writing comments for you to look at later. This survey that we did was to solicit public input on the tiered versus flat rate, stormwater utility fee is requested at the previous study session. So we got 500 total responses, which is pretty significant, based on Norman's population size. That gives us about a 95% confidence rate that, and a 4% margin error that these are true to the current snapshot of Norman's population, Norman's sentiment.
What was the most responsive award?
It's on the front.
The next slide. I didn't say that, there you go.
Just curious.
Ward three was the most responsive word.
Okay.
Oh, that's why you have.
And as you might expect, the ward seven was the least responsive.
That's higher than our historical.
Okay.
It's higher than voter turnout.
3.4%.
So, there was pretty even spread across the wards. So pretty even input across the wards, accepting ward seven. And had more 35 to 49-year-olds respond than 50 to 65-year-olds, followed by 21 to 34-year-olds and 66 or older with a few under 20s. And when, most of these responses were from registered voters, people said they're registered in City of Norman, which is really good.
Yeah, that's great.
Somebody asked, please indicate how much concern the following issues are for you. The, people say that the properly maintaining and improving our stormwater infrastructure ranks higher than either protecting our streams, lakes, reservoirs, or preserving, like, Thunderbird as a drinking source, but all of them are pretty equal in importance to the respondents.
Properly maintaining, kind of.
Yeah.
Goes over those.
Yeah.
It's important for them.
So, then asked, how could, would you rate the city's current ability to provide quality stormwater maintenance and infrastructure? Most people think we're doing a somewhat effective job, or not so effective, somewhat not so effective job is where most of the sentiment lies. This side, this question asked what people's, if you would be willing to support a stormwater bond, should it be on the upcoming, or in, in the election, in the upcoming year? We have 46% in support of that, and the rest are e, pretty evenly split between no and unsure. And looking at unsure, the unsure votes as a potential yes or no, that could be changed with education. So we're pretty close to a 50% or more of.
That's pretty high when you haven't started a campaign yet.
Right.
I mean, that's when people really start paying attention, so, and that's when you have a chance to move those people during the campaign if your messaging is.
Certainly. With, for their education, you could move some of those 25% to a yes.
A lot of.
Now, looking at whether people would vote, or what the support is for a utility fee, it's fairly evenly split, but different than what we've seen on previous surveys. There's actually more in support of the utility fee than are against or unsure, although they are all pretty close. And again, looking at the unsure population, there's even more that are unsure than are against it. So that unsure population represents potential yes.
A lot of possibility.
A lot of possibility. Now, looking at which options, which rate structure there is preferred, the, you can see here that the option C, the tiered 3.69 for residential, had higher support with, you combine the, the very willing and somewhat willing, there's 52.43% are more in support, more in favor of the tiered structure, and followed by the $5 flat fee at 48.51%, very willing or somewhat willing, and the 6.25% had a majority opposed to it. So that one is the least popular option.
Those, you were combining somewhat willing, very willing.
Yeah, I was combining these, the blue and the green categories, those are somewhat willing and very willing. So you look at those, they're all, they're all to some extent willing to vote for it or support it. And, and so you all have the.
Councilmember Hickman?
On this survey?
Yes.
Since we're talking about doing these elections in April, when they would be potentially just a municipal-only election, versus when we first talked with Han, we talked about trying to get these on the November ballot, where we have potentially larger turnout, are we surveying past voters, likely voters in municipal elections, or are we surveying just everybody that's a registered voter in the city?
This survey was used Survey Monkey, and so we just sent it out to anybody in the city that could take the survey. That was the population that we went to.
But 97% were registered voters. We just don't know if they're, how often they vote, that stuff.
We don't know how often they voted.
Yeah.
We didn't ask that question. And you do have the, we had 188 write-in responses, which is pretty good. That gives us, it's given us a good idea of some areas to target, specific areas to target for their education, such as what really will the utility fee be used for? There's kind of a lot of misinformation there. And I've gone through, and in your, in your packets, you'll see some colored tabs next to them, scrolled up and through, and tagged what the topics are, and I send a topic to them so that we could come up with what the majority of topics are. So the highest mentioned topic was the desire for an equivalent tiered fee structure. And what that means is they want the same rate, the same rate, so if a lower property is paying $6 for their property value, they want the same differential for a higher property value. And, or, and then 26 wrote in mentioning that they don't have confidence in the city's fiscal responsibility, so they won't support anything regardless. And 22% or 22 people wrote in, they don't want taxes, don't raise taxes, followed by people would like to see businesses pay more, which that is what I believe Andy or Andy could, or Andy or Amanda could speak to that, that that is, the businesses will be paying more in their fee structure. Correct?
Than the residents?
Than the residents, yes. Yes. So that, but that wasn't on this survey, this was a residential survey. And, followed by people would like to see permeable versus non-p permeable, that play a role in the cost structure.
I like to just do something.
What?
I like to just do something.
Nine people did write in, we don't care what it is, just get something done.
And I've had a number of people at meetings say that to me, please just make a decision.
Okay.
So.
So, and you can look, I just wanted to give you a snapshot of kind of what the top comments are about, and you can look through all of those on your own later.
Credit for mitigation.
Got a clean audit.
We did just get a clean audit, too.
Fiscally doing, fiscally responsible.
So, yes, I was going to ask, maybe Carrie might want to say something and Amanda and Andy, since they've been just.
Since we saw you last, we've been to several ward meetings.
Sure.
Oh, okay. Anyway, several ward meetings.
You're for Christmas, little girl.
We've been to wards two and four, ward seven, six and eight. And I will tell you, by far in six and eight, people support, after we talked to them, people support a flat fee, with the cards that were turned in, and that was the discussion, and that was the direction it went in. So we didn't get a lot of comments, well, we have comment cards back from wards two and four, and they prefer tiered. I haven't heard about the ward seven comment cards, if there were any.
We just had a few of the ward seven comment cards returned, and of the ones that were returned, the committee's preferred option was, was the preferred option on those, although the discussion tended to lean towards a tiered structure.
So I just wanted to present that information that we've gathered since we saw you all last. It was pretty unanimous in six and eight. I think there was about 30 people at eight and probably 10 to 15 at six that felt, you know, that liked the flat fee. So I just wanted to present that. It feels like, and maybe I could be wrong, but I've been doing this for a long time, when you stand up and talk to people about it, and why the committee made the decisions they made, right or wrong, they say, like, we just got to do it. Your preferred option, you know, when you have a long discussion with them. When they don't have a lot of background, what I've seen in the surveys, and again, right or wrong, I don't know, when they don't seem to have a lot of background, or haven't been to one of these meetings, or haven't studied it at length, then of course the tiered fee. So I don't know what that tells us, I'm not an expert at this, I'm just kind of sharing my observations. I don't know if Andy has anything to add.
Well, I'll just say, I think, yeah, I want to make sure.
You want to throw more utility?
I would just reiterate what Amanda said, I think that just do something deal is probably the message that I would want to come across to this. I respect, I understand you guys have a very difficult decision on these items, but any of those three options were supported by the committee, and very strongly supported by the committee. I think, when you look at the survey results from both Han and what you've done, Annalise, I think it's pretty clear that these options are all pretty close. And so. And so that's what you guys get to pay the big bucks for, I think, is what I would always say. And so to me, this is an opportunity, as a joke, of course, opportunity to really make a decision and support that. Because I think as a committee member, and I, one of the ones we've from Amanda, but I think those others that are here, we will gladly support any of those three options because I think any of those options allow us to move forward as a community. And I think any day that we wait is a day that's going to be challenging for us as it relates to stormwater and some of the efforts that I know Carrie and Sean get to see every single day. And so I do, I would just add that my own, you know, very editorial, since I've been given the opportunity to say it, I think having the opportunity to have those two together makes communication and that utility and the bond package much easier, much more fiscally prudent from a campaigning perspective. And I think it allows the community to move forward in stormwater. And so I certainly offer that. I know that we're tough decisions. I know you about language and all kinds of different places, but $5, six and a quarter, you know, I think it's pretty clear. Six and a quarter allows you to do more things. $5 may be easier to have a political list. So I'm not real, three, six and nine, pretty simple. Is that better or where do I fall within that category? Is it going to be a dollar cheaper or is that same as five? I mean, that's what people are going to think. If they're making that decision based on $1, then then we, we don't have the community I believe we have within Norman, which is a community that supports finding solutions for problems. And I believe that since I was very young and was born here. So I actually, I guess the final words I would say is just if we could come to a conclusion tonight, I certainly would very much appreciate that. And I would be supportive of whatever solution that each of you decide is appropriate. So that's all.
Councilmember Clark.
So I've noticed the same trend for Amanda. Like if I can get, I was at a group last night and was explaining things. Their, their first blush is the tiered because it seems more equitable. But when you figure out how much time and effort the committee's put into it and here's what it covers, then a lot of people tend to go with the experts like, okay, well, you clearly have spent time on this. I will support what you recommend. It's like paying for an attorney and then not taking their advice, right? So but if we want this to pass, if we want this to pass, we need to do what I think people who don't go to these meetings, which we've had, what you had one, you had one, you had one, I had one, you have them all the time. And if people don't, I mean, that's not going to change. So I am, I'm going to support a tiered, a tiered fee because I think it has the best chance of passing.
Councilmember Holman.
I think for the most part, ward seven residents are willing to support the better good. We know we have a problem, willing to, even if it's not the most absolute equitable and fair, will support it because it's the right thing to do. But I personally support a tiered system. I think it's more fair. But when I left my town hall the other night, my girlfriend, we got home and she told me, I really like the flat fee. And I was like, well, why? And she said, well, just.
I sat by her. She told me that.
She said, well, it just seemed a lot more simpler that people could understand it. And I said, well, yeah, that makes sense. And I, I went and explained it. I said, you know, so what would you think though about like a small house pays the same fee every month as a very large house in Norman? Do you think that would be fair? And she said, well, I guess not. And I said, well, that's the questions that we're going to have to deal with if we go with a flat fee is, it is the most simple. It could get it done and everybody's paying the same. But can we all explain to our lower income residents or people with smaller properties that they're paying the same as some of the very largest concrete covered properties in the city? So I've, I've heard a lot of mixed, I, I'm definitely myself leaning towards a tiered rate, the three tiers, maybe four, but, but I would agree. It's very split from people I've talked to about flat fee versus. And whether the tiers are equitable too is a question as well about the percentage there.
You might explain how the tiers were, or was it just for commercial? It was the, it was the calculator that came up with the tiers, right?
It was based on the needs. It was based on the analyzed needs of the committee to reach. We didn't solve the issues with the stormwater needs that we have for ongoing, ongoing stormwater needs we're having in the city, but it was helped us move far ahead. So those were based on that, trying to get as close to the $7.4 million that the six and a quarter raised was, and then yes, to your comment, Mayor, that it was based on where do those slots fit in to reach that level of support for the system? That's how the tiers were super right.
And the committee was very concerned about sticker shock. If, you know, not, not having things too high, at least on the residential side, for fear we would have the same issues we had last time.
I'm, I'm a tiered guy, was tiered last time. I haven't changed my mind.
I'll, well. Kaká, kaká.
Councilmember Hickman.
I guess the question I, is do we have time to make changes to the tiers? I mean, are we locked in that it's the only of these tiers that are being presented? Make it, for example, could you change residential tiers to be, I don't know, like 250, five and 11?
I don't know why not.
I mean, I'm just asking. I mean, I think in a conversation I've had with Amanda, the, the feedback was that if we change the committee's tiers, I guess that's the question.
If you want us to reconvene the committee to change those tiers.
Or add to them.
We do not have time before January 8th first reading.
But one of the things.
But you don't have to reconvene the committee to change those tiers. Council can change those tiers.
Well, I honestly, I think that's prudent considering we've spent two years having the decision committee and that we want to have something that you guys are going to be, you know, what people want to have. I would want to have the decision committee's input on it.
Really helpful, the second meeting.
I just asking the question.
I know it's a, it's a great, I think it's where we all are. We're, we're all afraid to take that next step. I think we desperately need to take the next step and we just need to decide. I'm, I, I was tiered, I went to the $5, now I'm back to the tiers, kind of because of what Bria said. And that was, we're not going to be, we're not going to be able to talk to every single person. So we're not going to be able to make the case for every person that finally goes, okay, 625, that'll pay for what we really need. We're not going to be able to do that. Three, six and nine gets it pretty close. I'm worried that if we start tinkering with it, that we've put so much of this information out to different people, that people are going to go, wait a minute, what, where did $11 come from? I, I thought we were, it was going to be nine. When I said I liked tiered, that's what I was saying. So I'm wondering if that will, would make a little bit of a problem if we start tinkering with these things that we've gone out to six ward meetings and 500 of these, and I've put things in news, the newspaper and, okay, I'm going to call on Sarita first because she hasn't spoken yet.
I look like I'm about to cry.
Don't cry.
Don't crying over stormwater. Can we add an ag here? That's, that's what I would like to see. An ag exclusion or ag tier. For those, it's my same song and dance. For those east of 48th Street, not on the urban infrastructure.
Only if we do it for the people on the west side that flow in the Canadian River. I have nothing to do with like throwing, you know.
But they're on, they're on city infrastructure.
I guess ag land too, you know.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I think it's fair.
So just all ag land in the whole city.
Councilmember Clark.
I'll come back to that. I'm not entirely opposed to it.
I don't blame you.
But I, I agree with Mayor Miller that it would be confusing if we tried to change it right now. And we've said many times, we can get something on the books and change it later. We could do a rate increase on just the larger properties at a later time. There's nothing that locks us in forever. I mean, let's be mindful of that. And if we have an opportunity to get it in the books and overcome being the only city in the state of Oklahoma that has to vote on the creation or raising of utilities, then we need to do it now, last year. Now, with that one, in, in terms of equity with, because I have ag land, you have ag land, how, how are we going to, I'm all for it. I think that's part of the, another interesting piece of Norman, the dichotomy that we have between urban and rural. How do we address that and be equitable? But.
I think we.
Yeah, I guess that's my question.
I'm sorry. I don't want to cut you off, but I, I kind of was, I've thought about that too is the 48th Street is that urban line. That's the, that's why I've come up with that, it's sort of magic. Remember, the 48th Street line is where a lot of services the city offers stops. A lot of other things stop there. The fire hydrants, do you mean, we don't have fire hydrants. We don't, do you have fire hydrants out there in your ag part?
I do. We, we do plan on cleaning up ditches and maintain this stormwater flow out there.
There is more stormwater infrastructure east of 48th than anywhere else in the city.
And I guess my question to you is, is $6 really going to kill you?
Well, it's $3.
Well, I mean, three, six.
For a lot of them.
Well, I mean, is it going? Me personally.
Not you personally, I mean, some of the people you represent is that.
The people I represent in the agricultural land, the P, I represent two sets of people. We have some very urban folks and they don't mind. This, this all probably applies to them.
Probably like your 48th.
They're probably just fine, just the same as yours and yours and yours with whatever we come up with. They're going to be just fine with it. But it's the people that are very disenfranchised by the city of Norman. A lot of them were annexed into the city to protect the lake. We have other situations like we can, at 48th East, we can only have one house on 10 acres. I can't sell off two or three of my acres to make a little extra money. I can't do that. And the reason for that is that lake protection, right? So we don't have a bunch of septic tanks sitting there on the lake.
Is that not a plus?
It's a plus for me, but some people don't consider that a plus.
Why'd they buy the land if they know they couldn't?
Their family owned the land. They were annexed. The city of Norman came in and said, now you can't build in the WQPC. Now you can't do this and you can't move dirt around. And you, I mean, I'm.
I can see that part.
You know, there's a lot of things that they didn't really want to participate in as being part of the city of Norman. Now, that's not everybody. Some people moved in, just didn't know where they were moving and got there by accident. And we have evolved in that way. And I kind of think that they're not also getting credit for the, the parts that they're adding to. The fact that they have green spaces and they're maintaining the green spaces. And they are what I've called the riparian zone for our city. They have woodlands, they have the cross timbers. Those things are left intact partly because we have the one to 10, but they're having to maintain that. Not only that, I have to maintain a herd of 24 goats to keep my fire suppression intact because I don't have any fire hydrants anywhere near me, like, you know, so.
Councilmember Clark.
So for the equitable issue, if we cut it off at 48, are we going to reevaluate our plan and not provide them services with this utility? Because that's, apparently they're going to get a lot of it.
They, they, Ward five gets a lot of stormwater.
We have to.
I mean, all of those, and we need to be doing more out there. We desperately need this for the area that we're talking about, Ward five. All of those creeks and streams, Little River, Jim Blue, Dave Blue, all of them.
Also, if you, if you exempt them, they still get to vote on it. So you're not removing them from the voting public. You can't, I don't, I don't, I can't imagine.
For the water, I mean, we already do that with water.
Right. But I mean, that's my point. If you exempt, you know, it's just a little.
They don't, they don't have the option for recycling. Some of them don't have trash services. They don't have fire hydrants. Their, their property taxes and their sales tax goes towards fire service and they don't have fire suppression.
But they will get services whether they support this or not. So I'm going to make a motion to support three, six and nine tiered system. And if we need to reevaluate that later, we will. But maybe we can target education to Ward five to show them what they'll get. And regardless of if we lose Ward five, we're still going to provide services to them with this utility.
Well, I think we have some.
But I understand your concerns.
I mean, I know Alex isn't here, but Ward eight, Carrington shouldn't pay a dime. They are not a problem whatsoever. They spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to contain all their stuff. And I mean, it's, and they're going to be paying for it. There's certain areas out there, what's the other one just off of Rock Creek that the Northern, Norman North, they did project for the.
Trail Woods.
Trail Woods.
Yes.
I mean, I think there's, we, we got little pockets and nonprofits. I mean, we, we talked about this, you know, we exempt this person, well, what about nonprofits? What about schools? What about, you know, if you're a community, you're a community.
If I may mention, I know at, at many of the meetings I was at, Amanda can speak to this too. And Carrie, we had a lot of Ward five residents attend the various meetings. And this question kept coming up. And when we explained to them that it was a, it wasn't like the last time that it was a single family rate, it's $5 or $3 or whatever it was. I sensed there was real buy-in from these folks that said, oh, okay, well, that's seems fair. You're just going to address my fee based upon one house and not my oil well or not my field or whatever it was.
Gravel drive.
Yeah, gravel driveway, right.
It must have been $60, $80 a month.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's a big difference between three, six and nine.
Well, and, and just to qualify what I'm saying, I have promised to fight for this. You know, and I, I'm doing what I said I would do. I have heard though that the $5, $3, $6 aren't big deals for a lot of people. There, there's a lot of folks out there, when I was knocking doors, that actually said, you know, well, that last one was just, we were worried. There was some mythical lady that they were all worried about, you know, that was going to grandma's house, that'd been there forever and she was going to pay 80 bucks or whatever. And it was going to put over. So I do think that there's a lot of support for just a smaller, the fact that it is a smaller fee. I appreciate the, the committee for having, you know, really put a lot of thought into all of this, but.
I'll knock doors in Ward five.
Go for it, girl. Here you go.
Great, we would love that.
Right now, we have more people saying tiered than.
I just need to see you explain somebody that your house is two times the biggest mine. You pay two times so much. Your house is, I mean, I think that helps as opposed to.
I mean, I get that. I like the flat fee for the community aspect of it. Like we are all paying a dollar amount to be part of a community and to have clean water and to have infrastructure. I like that part too, personally.
And we do that for a lot of things. I mean, you know, we do, we have a lot of flat, well, utilities are flat.
So I have nothing more to add to that.
On this particular one.
That is a good point.
Okay, we're, we're going to have to make a decision by the eighth of January. So I'm, I'm ready to move forward with a tiered rate.
That's why at my town hall, I told residents, I said, I think we're 100% sure we're doing the capital, stormwater capital bond in April. But although I personally think utility and the bond should be together, I was not real confident that the council would agree on that rate by January 8th. And so the utility might be something that happens later. Again, I, I think they should be together. I would like for us to come to an agreement by the eighth, but I, I was pretty upfront with my residents. I'm not sure we could do that.
Am I correct that we can put three, six and nine for first reading and amend it before second reading? So we have more time than we think. I think if we know we want a tiered rate, that gives us time to reevaluate. I do share the concern about we've, we have done a lot of outreach with the three, six and nine already, but we're not going like 25, 50 and 75 if we make changes. So it wouldn't be that much of a difference. So I say we move forward with the tiered system and continue to reevaluate another option and maybe do another survey on that. That would, that would make me feel better. If we got 500 people to respond to that one, we could send it, is, I guess you can't really capture who responded.
Okay, here's, here's what, what the council is talking about as the ballot for stormwater, these two things. And then have them.
I mean, to your point.
Chime in on that.
There's a, there's a computer over there. I mean, we can go over there and, and what I did, I said, these are my assumptions. And then you just play with it. I mean, my particular assumptions were no general fund subsidy. Keep the percentages the same. I think it's 54% was residential, 46% was commercial. Keep those allocations same with this. And that's when I came up with, with, with my deal as a start. So I think once you have your parameters of what you want it to look like, okay, let's make this 500 square feet. What if we do 60? I mean, it's, I ran, I don't know how many scenarios in 30 minutes.
Councilmember Hickman.
Well, I'm, I just want to make sure I understand correctly. This ballot will include, let's say we do the tiers, the tiered fees for residential, for examples being discussed of three, six and nine, correct? Would also include the committee's proposed tiers for non-residential.
That's what we're understanding.
Yeah. Did we, and but the survey data that you presented to five hundred people and questions, I don't see any survey data on the non-residential tier. So will the same people be voting on both tiers or only businesses be voting on non-residential and residential people only voting on residential? Everybody will be voting on everything, right?
Right, yeah.
So what if we have people who are maybe okay with the residential tiers, but not the non-residential tiers? Do we have any idea how they're going to vote?
That wasn't in the survey and the reason we didn't do that is we didn't want to, um, have people that didn't understand the business side of it to set the, that maybe didn't have like business to, um.
Well, I just think that, I'm sorry, I just think that, um, at, at some point in time, people are gonna have in front of them a ballot that's gonna say residential, these amounts, non-residential, this amount. And I think that if the first time they see that is when they go into the ballot, if they have a reaction like, oh, that doesn't seem fair, or they have a question, no matter how much talking we have done, they could say, oh, I didn't realize that. I'm a no now. And I get the sense that we haven't actually presented it to the people the way, in these surveys, the way it's going to be on the ballot. And so I think that we should consider, uh, doing that if we're gonna do more, uh, investigation or more, uh, public or community input, uh, so that we are getting the full picture of how people are going to perceive this ballot and how they maybe will respond to what we're asking them to vote on. It would be one thing if we were only asking for a utility fee on residential because that appears to be some of the data, we do have some data on that. But I'm concerned that we've not, uh, very much at least included in our surveys. I'm not sure if I can remember a survey that we've done at all that actually includes the non-residential piece. Maybe we have and I'm just not remembering.
Counselor, I just mentioned, we've had a pretty robust outreach program since May of this year, six open meetings.
No, I understand that. I'm talking about the survey. I'm talking about the survey.
This was all in those, uh, have we done a specific survey? I don't think specifically.
The polling, that's what I'm talking about.
We actually had a meeting with the chamber, uh, business community. We, we've really tried. Generally, I would, generally, I would say we had very little feedback, certainly very little negative feedback on the non-residential, that it became kind of a non-issue at all of these public gatherings.
And I think that, I think it's great to go ahead and do the survey now. If we're saying, okay, here's where we think we're landing, so what do you all think about this and include all of it? Part of the thinking, and I asked about the commercial first thing, was wait a minute, why didn't we have that on there? But the more I thought about it and after I talked with Carrie and I talked with Annalise and, um, that really what we were trying to, I mean, what the council had said was, let's see what, what people thought about the flat fee or the tiered. So instead of adding a bunch of other things, they just focused on that. So now I think is the time for us to go back and have people look at everything. Personally, if I was voting on something like this, I, I have a small business, but it's rental property, so I wouldn't care about anything, but the, the residential rate, it wouldn't be something that would concern me. And I think most, most residences that don't have businesses, they're gonna care about what they're gonna pay.
Well, part of why I asked the question was that your list of topics, I mean, I think I remember something referring to businesses of being mentioned, you know, a couple of times, you know, and if you add up, you know, those percentages of those questions, whether it was eight, ten, twelve, fifteen percent, I mean, that could be the difference in if we win or lose. Uh, I mean, you know, I think this is gonna be a close vote, you know, potentially either, either way. Um, and so maybe this is the time now, we go back with a set of questions. Because, you know, I, I don't, I mean, honestly, I, to my knowledge, the chamber's not taking a position. I mean, I don't know if the business people are gonna be supportive or not. I don't know if the residential people are gonna be supportive or not when they see the residential fee in the context of the business fee. So to me, a survey that does, that looks at the, you know, if we, if we think we wanna do tier on residential, that is, you know, you know, would you support residential tiers like this? Would you support business tiers, you know, like this, like they proposed? Would at least help give us, I think, more information to make a more informed and, you know, decision.
I think to speak to your question, would that be the first time that they see the pieces together on the bond is, no, this is prior to education. This was, as Amanda said, focusing on whether it would be a flat fee or tiered residential fee, how people felt about that. So that was a sentiment that we were looking to capture. And this is prior to, this isn't used for education purposes. Surveys, surveys aren't for education purposes, therefore capturing the current sentiment or mood. And, um, so before, prior to anything being on the ballot, we would do an educational, I mean, so that wouldn't be the first time they would see that.
No, I understand, but it would be at that point in time, like we learned last time.
Yeah.
Once we have voted on it and the ballot language is locked in, um, the vote's been launched and it's too late to make changes, so to speak. And to me, you know, we're at the point now where we're being asked to make a decision and we have not gotten feedback necessarily, at least through these surveys, um, or these polling data. Uh, we spent a lot of money on, on some polling data that puts the residential potentially tiered fee system in, in the same set of questions side by side with the non-residential tiered system to see if that shifts any of those numbers in, in any kind of a meaningful way. And it also addressed some of the feedback that we saw in this survey when people had questions about the business fee. It could make the numbers look better, it could make them look worse. I don't know.
Councilmember Castleberry.
Well, one thing I'm all for survey, I think it's a good idea, but one thing I wanna point out on the survey, I think, however you ask the question, I don't want, I don't want it to be a leading question, but I want the question to be something to the effect, non-residential contributes fifty-four percent of the problem. Their fee will pay for fifty-five percent of the deal, you know, because you're like within one percent, I believe, of each one. And so that, now I understand, within the tiers, there may be some inequity. But we say, okay, residential contributes forty-five, I'm gonna round out, forty-five percent of the, of the problem and they're gonna pay for forty-five percent of it. And non-residential pays for fifty-five percent of the cost of whatever this and, and, and see if that resonates. Because I think that's kind of what we've come up with. Although the individual tiers may be a problem, but I think that's an overall equity issue of like, yeah, business is paying their fair share. Now, each individual business may not be paying their fair share. And I think that would be, there should be additional questions towards that. But I would like to say the whole, yes, the business community is paying their fair share, the residential community is paying their fair share. And then you break it down a little bit, okay, yes, in total, they're paying their fair share. Now it's three, six and nine, the right structure, or is it two, four, six, you know? But I'd kinda like to see it, a bigger picture question of, hey, they're, they're, one of those things was pay their fair share or contribution? Well, yeah, they are paying their contribution. And then is there a way to?
Think.
I don't wanna lead the question, but I, I, but I wanna get that answer to, yeah, everybody's comfortable with, everybody is paying their fair share group-wise and then narrow it down to more to individual-wise, are they?
I'm understanding what you're talking about is more education.
Yeah.
And like I mentioned, that's not the place for a survey. That's the place for, that's where we can look at those comments and stuff that have led us to where, this is where education is missing and where we can target education to kind of help people understand that businesses are paying their fair share, even if each business is individually paying their fair share. And that residents are paying their percentage of contribution. And that certainly can help us target education.
Well, I think we'll be good, maybe one of the questions is, you know, on those tiers, I, I think most voters do not want small businesses to be disadvantaged, you know? Nobody cares about big business. I'm, I'm talking about the smaller business that, you know, they're not paying a hundred bucks a month. That, you know, okay, well, that's like what we have fifteen, twenty bucks a month, whatever for a smaller business. You know, is that, because you can charge business all you want to, ultimately, the individual pays for it. Maybe let's not be.
I, I just wanna see three, three questions. I know you have all the other ones. One, you know, would you support, yes or no, most likely, less likely, whatever? Would you support a residential fee, tiered fee structure as follows? And then list the three tiers. And based on what, how they're broken out. Would you support a non-residential fee based on the structure like, you know, list out how that's structured? And then would you support a residential and non-residential fee, uh, on a single ballot, one vote? You know, you, you're approving both. Yes or no, you know? That way we can see people like the residential one or they don't like the residential one, they like the non-residential one, they don't like the non-residential one, you know, and how do they? Because ultimately, I think, I don't think people necessarily will understand if we don't ask that third question, the two together, that they're gonna have to, that, because I assume it's gonna be one vote. It's not gonna be yes on res, residential, you know, yes on non-res is two votes. It's gonna be one vote, you get both. So I think we gotta ask those three separate questions so we can, so we can see the data. Because if the residential one comes back sixty percent of the people like it and the non-residential comes back and only forty percent of the people like it, and then the two together come back at only forty percent like it, then we know that we're losing some of the residential people when they see the non-residential piece. Or people, or it could be reversed, that forty percent, only forty percent like the, you know, the residential and sixty percent like the non-residential. So we, if, if we have a, an issue, we know kind of where it is we need to maybe, maybe look at. Uh, so I think those three questions, knowing now that we're leaning towards doing potentially the tier, you know, we already have the non-res tier, would give us the, some good insight to make a final decision.
Can I ask, um, so is council asking to do another survey, but prior to making a decision?
I, well, I mean, I think right now we're at tiered and we're, what I think, I believe that we're asking is to go back and now poll people on, here's what the ballot's going to be. How likely are you to accept? I'm, I'm a little concerned about phrasing those individ, I'm, I'm a little concerned that people will start getting confused about between the residential and, and the business. I.
I don't know. Explain maybe on the survey, non-residential, you know, businesses, industry, you know, write that out. Because I think when you have residential, non-residential, that non gets, you know, people will see it with their eyes. It's.
Sure.
Residential and business, I mean.
Yeah, just work on it somehow a little bit.
You're asking, this is unscientific, the Survey Monkey approach, right?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
But the idea is to say, okay, now here's what we're, here's what we're proposing. It's not final, but here's what we're proposing. Would you, would you support this or wouldn't you support this and?
But with one of these questions, I would like the, the breakout between residential, non-residential, like your pie chart that they.
Yeah, and it's, for this plan, it's exactly on, exact to the percent.
I think that.
Forty-four and fifty-six in previous area and forty-four, fifty-six funding.
Okay.
Could be a full, got a whole fairness standpoint.
We can certainly do that in the same format that we've done here. And I would say since we just did a survey, the likelihood of getting a five hundred response is lower. People having just taken a survey.
You could save five hundred people.
And it's Christmas.
Same five hundred people.
The same five hundred.
Yeah, you, you, you might wanna wait till after Christmas. It only took, I mean, you got, in six days, you got it, so. Yeah. Councilmember Clark.
Will there be a question, do you prefer this rate structure or this rate structure? Are we still putting that in for residential?
Do we want to have that question in there? I thought we just wanted to ask them about the tier, you know, we're proposing the tiered structure. Now we're asking them not to choose, we're asking them if they'd support it.
But I think, I thought the question was, do you support a three, six, nine tier?
Right.
Residential, residential, yeah.
For residential.
So instead of having the, do you prefer a five dollar flat fee, six to.
No, I'm saying this tier or this tier.
Yeah. Okay, which, which rate?
Which tier, yeah, which rates for each tier?
Not a three, six, nine, but would you support a three, six, nine or a few other different tiers?
I would say one other different tier.
One other tier.
Yeah, I mean.
Whatever tier that you guys, I would need direction from council on what the other tier structure would be. But I can certainly include a question like that.
Okay.
I guess the last question I have is, you know, there's also discussion about the policies, you know, and other issues related to that, like for example, our HOA is gonna be released from liability. I know that's something Councilman Castleberry has talked about and I've talked about, you know, if this is, this passes. And so, you know, I think it's important, we think we learned last time that as we move forward with finalizing, if we're going to send something forward, that we have, you know, I think sometimes I refer to them as the book of policies or whatever, that we have that done and we hash that out as well.
I think that staff's been working on that the whole time.
I, I understand this. I haven't seen it back in a while, so I just wanna bring it up.
Ready to bring that forward to you.
Good. That, that's great. Good.
Well, how about a question about the, we talked about HOAs in the neighborhoods, you know, if we said, you know, I think we need to talk about, do you support highly that neighborhoods get relief? Because I think that's a big provision of the deal of, you know, the provision we have in there for neighborhoods as opposed to HOAs.
Yes.
And I think that's gonna be a big deal, but I'd like to confirm that.
Sure.
Um, but I do think that, you know, HOAs, I mean, one of the reasons why I was against it last time is because the, the HOAs are, are paying for it and then you're paying your dues to the HOA. So they're being double taxed, so to speak, or double feed, whatever you wanna call it. And I think we've kind of addressed that now, but I, I, I wanna see if people think we've addressed it or not.
And by the way, community buildings aren't charged in this plan. So if you have a pool house in your neighborhood.
You're only being charged per house.
You know, you're only being charged per house. So you don't have a, you know, your neighborhood isn't getting a bill.
I would point out, because of the experiences that I'm having in my ward, I have one, uh, neighborhood that's very much against it because they're already paying their stuff, but they're new. And I have multiple, multiple, three or four other neighborhoods that have huge bills because they have to have their things dredged and it's, that's what, is it six thousand or sixteen thousand?
Easily sixteen.
So it's in this, in there, so they've been paying their HOA dues to maintain it, but now they need major work and they can't do it. So the HOA thing, it just doesn't.
I think it's something we're, we're providing for relief for those situations.
That makes me feel so much better, but I'm just saying, I don't think we should offer an exemption for them because I've watched the HOAs be the ones that now need the help.
Well, there's not, there's not an exemption. It's just they're not being charged for the.
Well, no, no, I understand that, but I think that was a concern we're hearing is the HOAs, they pay their HOA dues to maintain it and now they're getting paid again. But because of the HOA or Neighborhood Assistance Program, for those that not, may not have HOAs, it helps them later on when, again, they have these sixteen thousand dollar bills that have their, uh, retention ponds dredged or, or the.
They were just getting a fee to maintain, but the capital project part of it, I think we've added that to. Because they don't, I mean, I personally would love for the city to take over all infrastructure. I think it's a city infrastructure, the city should be in charge of all the ponds, should be in charge of all the drainage. And I think, I mean, I know it's very expensive.
You know, if we had a.
But we have the engineers, we have the equipment. HOAs do not have, I mean, they're like us, they're volunteer people, whoever didn't come to meeting got elected president. And now he has to decide, he or she has to decide, how do I drain this ditch out like in Cambridge? You know, in our lakes, we've got those, you know, when I was on the warden eighties, we were still dredging that deal and the stuff in the middle, going north and south between Rhodes and Edwards. You know, we just didn't have the money to do it. And most of those HOAs have a, a cap that can't go up by more than five dollars or five percent per year because the builder put it in there because he didn't wanna pay a whole bunch of money. And so we can only raise our dues like five dollars every year. Right. Well, you know, you start out twenty-five bucks, it doesn't.
Amanda. So two things on that topic I'd like to add. The Neighborhood Assistance was our compromise to assist anyone with private stormwater infrastructure. So not just HOAs, there's neighborhoods, there's people in Ward five that have private infrastructure. They could apply to be part of this program and get some assistance. That is one policy that has to be worked out to your argument. So I know that there's a draft and you all have visited a draft, so the sooner the better on that one. Uh, the other thing is, is we talked about, and I hate to throw a wrench in almost ending the night and I'm not, but some of you were concerned about the general fund subsidizing the utility. And one of you.
She's like, only one of us cares about that.
I've made the point several times, whatever program you settle on, that's what you have to tell the people. Don't sell a seven million dollar program and then cut it down to four if it passes. I will tell you, if it gets cut severely, Neighborhood Assistance will be the first thing to go. That's one point two five million. That would be the first thing to be cut. I've heard that from staff. That's the, because that is not a have to when the other things are have to mandate-related, flooding-related. Okay, so I just want you to remember that in the, you know, the general fund subsidy in the future going forward.
We also can't buy it in future council on budget actions. So we can't, we can't promise that.
No, you can't.
Especially two or three years from now when the money's not there to do it.
That's right. I'm just putting that out there because that would be the easiest thing to cut off of that. It's not a have to. I want it.
For me, like Ward six, it's a have to.
I agree. I agree. That's why we put it in there.
It's important. I think Councilmember Wilson and then Holman.
Did we on, um, that Neighborhood Assistance note include road maintenance in any way? Is that a?
It is stormwater only, um, but storm, every road has a stormwater system and many of the road problems are related to flooding, uh, stormwater, culverts and bridges.
So you know where I'm going. You know what I've said is that we have all those darn private roads out there that are not maintained and defunct, HOAs and this kind of thing that, that's one of my biggest complaints that I get, not my own, that I get, is that the cost of gravel and the cost of keeping those roads out of our actual stormwater system is expensive.
I don't believe this program is designed to build, rebuild private roads.
I think that's good. I think that's good.
That way we give that.
Gotcha. Okay. All right, anything else? I'm sorry, we were talking.
I was just gonna say, I mean, I agree about, I've always been advocating that the, we have a utility that pays for itself, like our other utilities do. But I did feel a bit more comfortable after, I think Sean or someone on staff mentioned that out of all municipal utilities, stormwater utilities are pretty regularly subsidized by cities.
Very.
Compared to the other ones. So that made me feel a little bit better that we wouldn't be the, some sort of outlier here. But I do, I, I still do wish we were able to find a way to get a fully funded utility. I understand that's maybe not politically feasible at the ballot box, but and I don't, I think it'll be very difficult to ever be able to wean it off or raise utility rates enough to ever make up for that. But, you know, I think this council, we can commit that we're gonna, we say a seven million dollar program, that's what we're gonna fund. But you're right, we can't, we don't know what future councils will do and if they get in a budget situation, if that's what they'll go try to cut.
I think that's right. However, I do think that because of the, the committee's idea that we do a bond, I think it, over a ten-year period, we might be able to do a second bond. And that is gonna help with those really big, and at, at some point, we are going to improve some of this older infrastructure to the point where the maintenance might not cost so much, that we have those, we have those street sweepers, vacuums, that are, are going to help keep those lines from getting filled up with leaves and debris. So, I mean, I, I really think we, we've got a plan moving forward that can help start maybe controlling some of that.
Thank you, Mayor. It's really, we think of it more as services rather than the money. I think people get caught up in that seven point four, six point nine. We prefer to think of it as the services that are built into that program instead of the exact number.
And if we get into reuse, we may be helping to clean up our lake water. So there's some good things coming up in the next five to ten years. So, all right.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So are you, you were talking about polling on the tiers. Is it a possibility you'll want the committee reconvene to discuss other tiers? And, and should that be planned on after January eighth? I'm just trying, because we gotta let, you know, trying to plan ahead. I don't wanna get caught out and not be able to do it.
Well, I think it's gonna be hard to have you all meet before. If we wait on the, we wait till after Christmas to do the polling, I think it just about has to be, if, if we still feel so uncomfortable that when we come back on the eighth, we're not willing to commit, then I'd say the next week, maybe, maybe the very next Monday.
Yeah.
Which is your regular date.
Yeah.
Which is the committee's regular day.
It's your anniversary.
Right. It'd be like our year.
Two-year anniversary.
Our two, yeah.
I think if the survey results come back, it's horrible.
Yeah.
Yeah, guys, we need to work on this.
So the survey, sorry, so the survey, you would want me to put out with tiers, not just the one-tier structure and not with another tier structure?
No, I think we just go with the one tier that we've agreed on.
Okay, the three, six, nine.
The one tier for residential and the tier for non-residential.
You could ask them in their comments if they have some other suggestion, if you want to.
That's my thought, but it sounds like.
Okay.
We're trying to figure out what the chances are that they're going to vote on the bond.
We'll send the questions out.
Also, if you've got questions, we can send them out. We can submit a question to you and you can say now.
Yeah, we're gonna send it out ahead of time so that you can have an opportunity to review, make sure that we're asking the questions you want us to.
But I guess, reason why I said what I said was that if we, it sounded to me like we actually started changing the tiers. Mayor, you mentioned that, that would be changing the narrative of what we've been saying in all these meetings about three, six, nine.
That worries me.
And that could cause the committee to have, to potentially not be able to get done with their work in order to get this done by January. And so I pulled back on saying, you know, well, I understand, I think what Councilmember Clark was saying, adding another tier option, that'd be something totally new. You know, what I was getting at was, let's put, let's say if we think we're gonna do the, the residential tier structure, let's just put that option in there and get feedback on it, and then put the non-residential one on there that I don't really, don't, we have got the survey data on it, see what people say about it separately. And then let's say, and if we had to vote on the two together, one question, you know, are you somewhat likely, most likely, very likely to support it? Because I think that will be interesting to see potentially, you know, how those numbers jive. I mean, are they all fifty percent I'd vote for residential, fifty percent I'd vote for non-residential, fifty percent I'd vote for the two together? Then if that's the case, and hopefully fifty-one percent, then we might be in pretty good shape. If the numbers are all up and down.
How do you make sure that they don't think they're gonna vote separately on both of those?
I think that's his one question.
That's the third question.
His third question. Is both on about as one?
I know that, but your residential people are not, I mean, ask, I don't know, I think it sounds confusing.
If residential comes in at seventy percent, people love it, and the commercial comes in at thirty percent, people hate it. And the, put on together comes in at forty percent, well, you know, the problem is the residential or the commercial. If it's even, you know, what, I mean, it might identify, hey, this is not gonna pass because the residential's messed up or the commercial's messed up.
Yeah, the reality is, is if the people think the residential is fair, but they think the non-residential is not fair, and they're gonna still vote no, we need to know that. And I'm not sure right now we know that, based on the survey data we have. I guess that's my point. Or vice versa.
Yeah, I agree with that.
That, that's fine. I mean, we can do that.
And that's where I think the three questions can get to that. All the other questions you have to package in there to get a complete survey.
I'm just asking what we're going to have on the ballot.
And that is, that is what I'm saying.
That's, that's what we're looking at right now.
Okay.
We'll get to work in the morning.
Always. Every morning, every day. That's it. We'll get to work at, all right, anything else? If not. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.